Good evening. The time being 7:17 and the board having completed its executive session and all members being present, I call this meeting to order. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes from February 12th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from February 12th, 2024.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Committee Reports, Administrative Actions. Do any of the members have any committee reports they wish to make at this time?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on to the Town Plans Report. Ms. Louder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nice and brief this evening, just a couple notes. First is two new public hearings scheduled for our April 29th meeting. First one being for 1563 Andover Street, a modification to the site plan special permit. Couple of members will know that that is the multifamily development at the corner of Andover and North. They're coming back for a review of some site changes. And for 1973 Main Street, another signed special permit for a Dunkin' Donuts location. They are looking to move to an electronic menu board sign and as we haven't been able to revisit whether menu boards are really applicable to this, they are coming for the signed special permit and we'll see them at the end of the month. And then the last note is, again, the last round of my office hours at the senior center and library will be at the senior center on April 30th from 10:30 to 12:30 and the library from the Thursday, April 25th from 11:00 to 1:00. Again, looking to have folks come in and talk about projects, zoning and whatever is on their minds. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to Board Reorganization as we have just completed the town elections. Congratulations, Mr. Fratella.
Thank you. That was a close one.
[laughing] Squeaked it up. All right, so I forget, do I do it or do you do it?
Alex does.
You do it, right?
All right, so do you want to go in order of clerk, vice chair and then chair?
Chair. But do chair first because then they can run the rest of it.
Okay, all right, so at this time, we will open it up for nominations for chair.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Steve Johnson for chairman.
Let's check in that.
Okay, any other nominations before we move forward with that motion? All right, so Mr. Fratella offers the motion for Mr. Johnson. Mr. Duffy seconds it. All those in favor for voting Mr. Johnson continuing as chair, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. So we'll move on to nominations for vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Fratella.
All right.
Second chair.
We have a nomination, we have a first, I mean, I'm sorry, we have nomination, a second. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, now, do we have any motion, I mean, yeah, do we have a motion for nomination for clerk?
I'd like to nominate Nick Lozot for our clerk, second.
All right, we have a motion made in a second. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, that takes care of that. Now, we can get the other part out of the way now, too. Is anybody unhappy with the committee they currently serve on in the event they serve on a committee?
I think that's just Mr. Fratella on CPC. I don't know if the elementary school building committee is...
Technically, we are still...
You're still a committee, okay. And then Mr. Duffy is the designee for NIMCOG.
Yeah, and I'm currently on the Economic Development Committee, so it doesn't really...
Technically, I don't think our...
Doesn't really move.
...close until MSBA finishes all the auditing and whatnot.
Okay, so those should be the four current appointments.
So the four current appointments, as they stand, we have a nomination to reappoint the members to those committees.
Do we need to do individuals?
No, just one nomination, we'll just do blanket.
I'd like to make a motion to have all current planning board members continue to serve on their current committees.
Have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Motion made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, that takes care of that. Brings us to Agenda Item B4, which is Request for Repetitive Petition. Do we have anybody here for this? If you want to come on up? All right, so just in way of a little background, because I did discuss this with Ms. Louder, this is a little odd. This is not a rehearing for something that came here. This is a rehearing for something that went to the ZBA. But apparently, under the rules, they have to get us to be okay with it and then they go get the ZBA to hopefully be okay with it. Then they can be reheard in front of ZBA. So this isn't really, this is more of a technicality for us and not really an issue we're going to have to deal with. It's just process, okay?
Okay.
State your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Hi, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design.
Marie from Rocky's Construction.
And Bruce Murphy, the homeowner.
All right, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Basically, they're here because they were in front of this Board of Appeals a month ago for a variance and the variance was denied. The zoning board thought that it was three feet from the lot line was a little too close, so under Chapter 48, Section 16, they have to come in for the planning board to show that they have a significant and material change with the project, so, specific, I'm sorry, material change. So they redrafted the plan, they filed a new application with the zoning Board of Appeals where the setback for a mudroom will go from three feet to 10 feet, which is pretty much similar to if it was an accessory structure. So, as you said, Mr. Chairman, all you have to do is make a determination that that is a specific and material change and then they can go back to the ZBA who has the authority to either approve or deny the actual application.
Okay, so we'll start with Mr. Lozotti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just kind of, you clipped the corner here, you've turned three foot into 10 foot and that's...
Correct. It's a pretty odd, it's an odd shaped lot, so the room will be a little unorthodox, but 10 feet is same distance that you would have if you had an accessory structure, so.
Right. All right, I mean, it looks like a significant change to me, but it's all the questions I have.
All right. Mr. Champa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also think it's a significant enough change to warrant the vote. I'm just curious, have you talked to the neighbor about maybe just cutting a little portion there so that you've got a little, a little more land or anything like that? I mean, it just...
Well, we did, but in the age of 8% interest rates, the banks would love you to swap your land if you have a mortgage so you can get out of your 4% interest and go into 8% interest. So if it weren't for interest rates, then that probably would have happened. The neighbor is in full support of the variance, by the way.
There's a letter.
We have a letter.
Okay.
Not that it's, but I just, but we did try that, Mr. Champa, yes.
I just, we've seen some of that sort of redrawing and redistricting of the lots to accommodate situations like that. I was just curious.
We did it many times when the interest rates were reasonable.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fratella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just for the record, it's 1558 Whipple Road, correct?
Correct.
So we haven't mentioned that, I don't believe it, since we started, have we?
No, no, sorry.
So 1558 Whipple Road, so, you know, you can always do a second mortgage somehow and do the, be the, having be the mortgage holder himself, the property owner, rather than going to any banks, but...
But it's two, you're dealing with two mortgages, because if you get land from the abutter, then he has to do that, you know. If it was just one property, then you could...
Right, right, okay, didn't think of that, so, but, yeah, I'm all set with this. I see you did the change and I'd be more than willing to vote aye for this, so, all set, thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So am I reading that right? Is it a 10-foot setback now that we're looking at?
Yes.
And that, that seems to be quite a substantial change from, you know, where you kind of lopped off that corner there and made that, you know, that parallelogram, parallel with the, with the property line. So, I mean, it seems like a reasonable, you know, request to go, to me, to go back to ZBA with, so I, I'm good with it.
Okay, the chair is all set as well. With that, what is the pleasure of the board?
We'll make a motion to close.
Just get open to public comments?
Nope.
Make a motion to endorse the request for repetitive petition at 1558 Whipple Road.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second and to make the finding as necessary for the repetitive petition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to our public hearings portion. Just to let everybody know in the audience, Agenda Item D, 402 Main Street, the applicant has requested to be continued to our 5:13 meeting, so if you're here for 402 Main Street, you are free to leave because you will not miss anything. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item C, which is 56 Kent Street. It's a family suite special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Do I have a motion made? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Do we have anybody here for 56 Kent Street?
Yes.
Want to come on up?
Grab another chair.
Once you get settled, if you give your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Anthony Duranty, homeowner. Joseph Sodogran. Just adding on in addition to our house for my daughter and her husband.
All right, simple. All right, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
Yeah, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't paying attention now, so are we at...
56 Kent Street.
56, all right. Yeah, actually, I looked those plans over. They look, it's a pretty nice set of drawings with a lot of detail and you eat in under the wire with the square footage, I noticed.
Yeah.
It looks like it's going to be a nice project. The typical questions that, you know, I'll ask it and then nobody else will have to ask, or you're already tied into sewer there.
Yep.
Right? Okay. And, I mean, that's really all I have on that. It's a nice, I did see that you have just a direct access to the, to the main house, though. We, you know, it's not like a common area or a mudroom.
It's like, the driveway part?
No, inside the house, on the floor.
Inside, yeah, it's just the hallway that continues up to the...
From the ADU to the, to the main house.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Works for me.
All right, Mr. Fratella?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Plans look great. I'm so happy at the fact that you're trying to help your, your daughter and your son-in-law with the new baby, right, the new baby? Congratulations there.
Thank you.
And I commend you for doing that and for, and for moving in with your father-in-law. It's a, it's a great thing to have an extended family like you're trying to do and hopefully you'll, you know, enjoy it and appreciate it because it's not easy these days. But with that, I'm all set, I'm all in favor of the family suite, what you're trying to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions. On the front page of the application, it says that you're, under the description, it said you were doing a two-bedroom family suite, but one of these rooms is labeled as an office.
Yeah, I think we're labeling it as an office because the doghouse in the back, we're not going to be able to put a, a window in the location, so we're just going to keep it as an office.
Okay. And then, is the basement, is that a full basement that can be furnished at some point, or is it just a, like a half basement?
No, full basement.
Full basement.
Eventually could be furnished.
Okay, but that would not be part of the family suite, even if it were to be furnished? That would be part of the main house?
No, the main house has a basement and then the new...
Oh, the new side's going to be...
The extended basement, because you have a square footage limitation, you would not be able to extend the family suite living space into the basement.
Unfinished, right?
Unfinished, yeah. And it's going to have the sea appliance stuff in there, built in, other than that unfinished.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozotti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looks great, no questions.
All right, chair is all set as well. Anyone in the audience, any questions, comments or concerns on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
We'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Do I have a motion made? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to the family suite special permit?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the family suite, 56 Kent Street, as described in these plans.
I have a motion, I have a motion made in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That brings us to Agenda Item D, 402 Main Street. The applicant has requested to be continued to our 5:13 meeting. We have them penciled, we don't have them penciled in. Oh, because I don't have that one in front of me. What time? Seven, seven to five or seven? Seven? Seven. So can I have a motion to continue 402 Main Street to 7 o'clock on 5:13?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item E, 1830 Main Street, modification of signed special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Do I have a motion made? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, so once you get settled, just give your name for the record, the floor is yours.
Evan Metalia, Metro Signing Honning. We are here, we had an approved special permit back in September of '23, Special Permit Number 2023-34. We have a modification on that special permit to seek relief on the required setback of 15 feet to change to 13 feet.
Okay. We'll start with Mr. Champa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what is the, I guess, what's the underlying reason to move the sign to where it is?
So after having the property professionally surveyed, the client decided that, you know, the excavation process of that layout is far more intricate and it's going to be a financial burden on him. It's going to be quite an extensive process that he didn't see at the time of the original special permit approval. And the way it's positioned on the property, there's not much room to work with, so seeking that two feet is, you know, leaves the property the way it is and doesn't obstruct, you know, a very busy, very busy property.
Okay, and I even, I looked at, there's a divider between that property and the Starbucks driveway and Starbucks already has a sign there, so that would impede the, I don't even know if that property was viable, you know, that strip was viable to share, but this seems like the only place it can really go, so.
Agreed.
I see no problem with it. I have no other questions. Mr. Chairman?
All right, Mr. Fratella?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you explain the severe financial hardship?
I actually can't speak to that myself, unfortunately. My client wasn't able to make it tonight, but that, that is what I was stated by him, stated to me by him.
Okay, so looking at the drawings, you've just got to remove the, the berm that's there? Is that, is that what you have to do in order to put out a 15?
So there's not quite, so you remove the berm, you're actually kind of shrinking down the, the drive space. So he would, his, his, his original intention was to close it off and reroute the traffic through the back of the building. And after having that surveyed, he, he decided that is not the best way to, to proceed. He feels like it has to stay the way it is right now.
Okay. All right, well, I guess one of my other questions I have is moving it towards the street, which is where you're going, towards, right? Towards the street?
Correct.
13 feet off?
Yep.
Are there any sightline restrictions, do you know, there?
I don't believe so. It's actually kind of in a weird spot. There's a telephone pole probably about two feet to the left. Other than that, it's, it's a pretty clear spot.
Okay. So will that telephone pole restrict the signage as they're coming in, coming in from the north?
No, it's actually on the backside, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, all right.
I'm sorry, didn't realize like this was on, I wasn't intended to talk tonight, but Dick Cuco from Woodland Design. I had worked with Mr. Cataldo on the sign to see which way we could move it. Basically, when you're coming from the south and you're going north, you've got the canopy on the gas station that kind of interferes with the sign. People that are trying to come to the sportsman's club, they drive by it, they end up turning around in Starbucks parking lot because they can miss it now coming this way and that way. So we thought about, all right, if we pull it forward in order for it to have, not block any sightlines going in and out of the gas station, it was more advantageous to move it over to the left side of the lot. And they originally were going to put it in that little triangle area, but then that would cause a blockage in sight distance when people were coming out of the building in front and they had to take that left turn. So we slid it over a little bit more to place it where it is so that if you're coming from the south, you can see it, you know where the entrance is and you can pull in and you miss it. When you, if you're coming from the north, it's not a problem, you see it just before you get to the driveway. But if you're coming from the Wilmington side, it kind of gets blocked a little bit by the canopy on the new gas station there.
The new gas station, right? Okay. Well, that makes sense. I mean, I don't have a problem doing it from 15 to 13, I just don't want to set a precedent that we're going to allow people at 13, you know, I mean. If the hardship is going to be 15, 20, 30, 40, $50,000, then it's, it's a big difference, but, so, but, I'll, I'll pass on that. All set, Chairman?
Mr. Lozotti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so it's just, you're moving it over to keep it in that median there, pretty much?
Yeah.
Okay. Particularly think I have any issues with this. I think I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there was no, nothing in, in the ground that prevented you from putting the sign where it is, right? Under Ground Utilities and so forth?
No.
Explain to me again, then, why, why is the need to move it up two feet?
Just the layout of, of the parking lot as it is right now. If we were to maintain that 15-foot setback, that would require that excavation and quite, quite literally changing the layout of, of the parking lot.
Of that curb, of that, of that little curb area.
And we, you know, we'd probably lose a spot. Not, we have enough spots, but we'd probably lose a spot and you'd have to, you know, cut into the pavement and, when you look at it, the sign, because the sign is up high enough that, that extra two feet, if it was a low sign, not a pylon sign, and it was, you know, that two feet difference, then it would kind of maybe make a difference. But basically, you've got the monopoles or you've got the pole coming up, the sign is up high enough so you can see under it, so sight distance lines aren't blocked, which I think is the main reason why, you know, we have the 15-foot setback. But the other thing that complicates it is there's a, and there's very few of them on Main Street, but there's a turnout on this one. Back in the day, they kind of thought that that was maybe the thing they should do. And if the turnout wasn't there, then the sign would appear to be further back than it actually is. But it just appears to be closer because that turnout is in there. It's a decel lane for, we don't even do them anymore, but 20 years ago, they thought decel lane was an important thing to do.
So one other question, we are, I mean, it looks like it's in somewhat of a proximity to power lines here and I just wonder if there was any type of restriction that you're aware of as far as, you know, I think, if I remember correctly, that sign was nine feet or so high, right?
Yeah. Yep, correct. Yeah, after our site survey, we were well clear of the power lines.
You what?
We were well clear of the power lines. It was not...
Okay.
Yeah.
What is the requirement, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think it's 10 feet.
10 feet is like an ocean regulation or whatever, working within power lines, yeah. But I'm not sure about signage or, or, or any structure for that matter, you know?
Yeah, we had our...
I guess I would like to see a clarification on that. You can just work with, with, with Alex on that, it's fine with me.
Okay.
But just to make sure that we're not creating some kind of a safety issue with utilities.
Yeah, I think we could have a memo put into the file, whatever that distance that's required.
Yeah.
To show that it's there. And if we had to move it a foot or two more to the south, we probably could, it's just the front to back, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if that's, if you're all right with that, Mr. Duffy, we'll, we'll add that memorandum into the file to make sure that it complies with the regulation you cited, yeah.
Yeah, you just don't want to create any problems for yourself either, you know?
Right.
You know?
Absolutely.
So other than that, I have no problem at all with the, with the two feet move. Thank you.
All right, so, yeah, I feel pretty much the same way, especially because, you know, when you look at it, the part that's closest to is the part that's highest up.
Correct.
So it's not even down where you'd be worrying about anybody seeing left, right or anything anyways. I don't know what that is, maybe another half a foot till you get to the actual base.
Mm-hmm.
So you're really talking about, you know, instead of it being 13, it's, you know, 13 and a half, you know, getting close to 14. So you're even cutting down the, the actual change a little bit since it's up top, not down there, so I don't really have any issue with it. Other than that, I'm all set with that. I'll be up, anyone in the audience, any questions or, questions, comments or concerns on this one? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. As to the modification of signed special permit, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we, that we allow for the modification and pending a, I guess you would call it a safety review from a utility standpoint on, on the sign location.
Okay, and included in that is our findings for Section 6.2.2. D and Section 6.2.10. D. Point one, to give us the ability to make the waiver to strict adherence. So we have that motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you for your time.
All right, that brings us to Agenda Item F. This is Merrimack Drive, Amendment to Definitive Subdivision. Have I got a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Once everybody gets settled, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design.
And Tom Schomburg of Civil Design Consultants.
What we have here, Mr. Chairman, board members, is Merrimack Drive is an existing townway that was approved on 1985 subdivision and thereabouts in 1985 slash 86, the town entered into an agreement with Mr. Baracus that Mr. Baracus donated the land that the water treatment plant is on. In exchange for that, the town constructed Merrimack Drive. And they constructed Merrimack Drive for two reasons. One, they needed to get access to the water treatment plant and they needed to build it far enough down the end of the roadway to get to the, where the pumping station is at the end of the, of the roadway. So the plan had a 12-lot subdivision and a cul-de-sac that was at the very end of the property. So the town really was not in any need of that cul-de-sac to operate the water treatment plant and it was the responsibility of the property owner to construct the cul-de-sac when and if they ever chose to build on the lots. In 2005, the town needed to expand, thereabouts, needed to expand the water treatment plant, so they asked Mr. Baracus if he would consider donating another piece of property, so he donated Lot 10, I believe it is, to the town so that they could expand the water treatment plant. So now, fast forward to 2000 and we started this in 22, Mr. Baracus says, well, I think it's about time for me to sell these lots, you know, these, a little bit older than I am, so he just thought he'd put all this, get all of his property in shape. So when we started to look at it, we were kind of surprised because the road is accepted and it's accepted as it was shown on the subdivision plan. So the portion, there is no cul-de-sac, but it's in an accepted portion of the roadway. So we were all a little surprised. We went down there and said, where's this cul-de-sac, you know? So, anyway, in order, at the time also, the cul-de-sac was extended almost to the town line because our rear property line is the Tucksbury Andover Town Line. Mr. Baracus owned that land as well, so being good planners back in 1985, they said, well, why don't you push the cul-de-sac back as far as you can so that if we ever have to loop property around into Andover, we'll do that. Well, then, Mr. Baracus donated that land in Andover to Avis, which is a conservation group, so that land is never going to be developed. So we came to the conclusion, all right, it's very steep in that area and it didn't make any sense to construct an additional 200 feet of cul-de-sac when we only needed to do roughly 100 feet in order to get the proper turnarounds and keep the grades and everything working properly. So that's why we're here. So the modification to the subdivision is to not take away from what the town has already accepted, but to construct a, actually construct a cul-de-sac and some of that cul-de-sac will come on to what is Lot 5 on your, on your drawing there. So in order to do that, it's a modification to the subdivision because we're actually changing the roadway. And the way I explain this is, because the question came up is, well, you're changing a right-of-way, how can we do that? And it, to me, it's no different than if the road was 600 feet long and we owned 1,000 feet of land and we wanted to extend it 100 feet, we'd come to the planning board with the subdivision, we'd extend it 100 feet. We happen to be extending it to the east, to the right-hand side. So it's So it's still an extension, so it's a modification. It will create a new shape for Lot 5, but the lot shape for Lot 5 meets the zoning requirements for Lot 5. So basically, we're here for a modification to the subdivision. The new cul-de-sac will be constructed, it'll be bonded, it'll go through the process of being constructed under the supervision of Department of Public Works. At some point in time, when the road is completed, the road will, there'll be an as-built done, it'll be brought in, and we'll be asking a town meeting to accept the new portion of the cul-de-sac. Whether the town chooses to discontinue the paper portion of Merrimack Drive is really inconsequential. It doesn't matter, it can stay there. It actually abuts the large piece of land that the town owns that the water pumping station is on. So, it really doesn't make any difference whether that gets put back into the, added to Lot 5. I think it's cleaner if it stays with the town ownership because they accepted it. They accepted it for a drainage project, and there was a reason why they did it. So we're working with DPW to make sure that the sewer and everything is fine. So what we're here for is to, I wanted to give you a history of it, just so you know why we're doing it. So what we're here for is to modify the existing subdivision to allow to have a shorter cul-de-sac, still meeting all the fire truck turning radio and so forth and so on, which in effect now, there is none. The only vehicles that go down there are for the water treatment plant, so they just do a three-point turn. But now that we're going to have homes down there, you know, we want to have a cul-de-sac, we want to be able to have trash trucks, school buses, UPS deliveries and everything, be able to go down and have a proper turnaround. So, that's why we're here.
Okay. Start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cuco, along those lines, fire department is going to be able to go down and turn around now with the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Presently, they can't, correct?
Correct.
They have to do a...
They back up.
They back up and go out.
Yeah.
So this will help them in their three-point, in their access and exit for the cul-de-sac.
Actually, they do, they do a lot of training, so that when they go down there for river rescue or whatever it is, because the Merrimack River is right there, so, but, you know, they, they back up more than 150 feet, which is against their code.
Regulation, yeah.
But there's no, there's no, there's no homes on the street yet, so if they back up, it's not really, not causing any harm, they just have a tag man out there. But it'll be much better for them now with the cul-de-sac.
So, you're going to be adding how many lots to the street?
Same number of lots. There's always been 12 lots on that subdivision, so.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Lozotti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so just to confirm, there's no cul-de-sac there right now, it's just pretty much a dead end.
Just stops, yeah.
That winds up with what I'm kind of looking at it on Google Maps here. And Lot 5 is instead just going to have a very kind of long driveway up to their property.
Yeah, even on the original plans, Mr. Lozotti, we knew we were going to have to cut the driveways in on those because, you know, it's pretty steep in there, so.
Yeah, yeah, I see little lines there.
Yeah, actually, Civil Design put in a better driveway than we had originally on the 1985 plan, so that it traverses along a contour line and comes in, it's less cutting of the slope.
Okay. And are these sidewalks kind of in the plan along here?
Yeah, there's a sidewalk that goes all the way, there's actually a sidewalk, the road was constructed, it has a sidewalk all the way down to where it ends. So we'll be taking the sidewalk around, it's on the other sheet there, whatever.
Yeah.
And additionally, while he's doing that, the project, when it was built, there were different stormwater requirements than there are now. So there is, there is some additional stormwater features that have been added in that DPW asked us to put in when we had a preliminary meeting with them. So, that's that. And the other, the question that they brought up was that each lot is going to have to file, there'll be a major land disturbance permit that will come in afterwards once we get all this stuff squared away. But, yeah, there'll be a sidewalk going over to that first driveway, which is the custom.
Okay. Great. I think that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chair.
I just, I'm looking at the, we have an April 1st memo from IDR with a number of comments. Are those comments, I mean, are those applicable to just the modification of the subdivision, or are those really more about how you're going to construct the roadway and the cul-de-sac?
I don't know if I've seen that memo.
There's some things about applicant has not indicated a sewer pipe outlet at a certain location, something about an invert, things like that. So, I was just curious if those comments still need to be addressed before we can finish considering your modification.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'll apologize. I forwarded that from my phone when I was on vacation, so you made on your receipt, and I, I'm sorry about that. Not a lot of comments, though, all seem relatively, you know, addressable.
Fire hydrant was on there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They want to add a fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac.
I think, I think Bill had told me that we're going to add a fire hydrant there. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I don't see anything in here that, that we can't take care of, and I wouldn't ask you to vote on it this evening, anyway.
Okay.
Only because...
That was my concern, is if we do, then you would own this, and obviously, if you haven't even seen it, that would seem...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's anything in here that's, that we're not going to agree with, but we, we don't have any problem with continuing, but I just, because I know the history of the project, you know, I wanted to come in and present it, you know, not on the technical stuff, but, you know, where we are at and how we're at. So, we will take care of all this stuff and hopefully be back to see you in two weeks where you'll be able to make a decision.
All right, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, if you could, Mr. Cuco, just clarify for me, why this plan shows, let me see which page I'm looking at here, your subdivision plan modification, so are you looking to get rid of the hash marked area? We're going to get rid of that, is that my understanding? And that's going to just become a straight?
Talking about this part here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to just stay wooded.
Oh, so that's existing, parcel C is existing?
Yeah.
Apostle A, rather, is existing?
Yeah, so that's why I said, when the town accepted it, they didn't accept it to what was constructed, they accepted everything that was on paper, which, you know...
So basically, you're going to have that cul-de-sac, and then you're just going to drive right into another cul-de-sac?
Well, no, because we're not constructing the, let me see it on here.
Like, what is parcel, what is the parcel C cul-de-sac showing me, telling me?
Mr. Cuco, just grab the microphone if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah, you don't have to move that, just give me your narrative on that, if you don't mind.
All right, so, because there's two different hatchings there. So, the X hatching in this first bulb, that's what we'll be constructing. The rest will just be a paper street.
That will be constructed, and that's what they're not constructing, that's the original.
Oh, 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 gotcha.
That's the original.
Understood, okay, okay.
So that'd be, like, Mr. Duffy, that'll probably just be like a paper street.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, no, listen, I don't have any problems with it, it looks like a good idea and a good step forward, so I'm good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Generally, the chair's all set as well, since we have a legal opinion here, we'll let, shoot this off to Kevin, and he can take a look at it between now and the next meeting, too.
Yeah, and our attorney had said that if you want, he could give Kevin a call, and he just asked me for his contact info, so if you could send it to me. And he said, "In two minutes on the phone, it would be easier than China."
Yeah, well, I mean, like, we'll send it to him, if you, probably would be in best interest to let him, give him a call, and that way, when we come back next time, we should have already heard back from Kevin that all is well.
Yeah.
All right, very good. All right, with that all, it up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to continue this hearing until our next meeting.
All right, so we have a motion to continue, we'll continue it to 7:10 at our 4:29 meeting. I have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimous, we'll see you next time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. All right, takes care of that. That moves us on to Agenda Item G, 20 Glenwood Road, Site Plan Review, Special Permit, Land Disturbance Permit, that is continued from our 3:25 meeting.
I was wondering about that, Alex, I said, gee, we haven't heard anything yet.
Sometimes I disappear.
Yeah. For the record, Mr. Chairman, Dick Cuco from Woodland Design.
And Tom Schomburg of Civil Design Consultants. So we were previously before this board, since then, we've received review letters from the town as well as TEC. We addressed these comments, and we also received a mostly clean review letter from TEC, with the exception of a few minor notation corrections and additional information requested for the operations and maintenance plan. If the board has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Did you get the building plans?
What is it?
The architectural plans you had asked for, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lauda, do we?
Yes, I...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, renderings?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we'll start with Mr. Lozotti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to confirm, are there, are there sidewalks going down Glenwood in this plan?
No.
There aren't, we show...
We show, just grab the mic, just show them what you're saying.
Is it like the one that's internal to the property line?
Yeah, we have made some changes based on suggestions that the board made on the sidewalk. So, it comes down around Main Street and comes up Glenwood to our property. So what we're in the process of doing is submitting a proposal for the amount of sidewalk to be included in the waiver. What our intention is, is that the fee to construct that sidewalk, the waiver fee, is probably 15% of the cost that's going to, for the whole project. So, and I don't think, it's advantageous to have sidewalks on those small streets, and I know it's no longer the planning board's purview to deal with the sidewalks. So what we're evaluating now is, what's it going to cost us to construct those sidewalks? We'll offer that to the DPW, and if they don't accept that, we'll just build them.
And so if they ask you to build them down Glenwood, would you do anything with your internal sidewalks here, or would you kind of keep it the same and just almost couple them up?
I mean, if we end up building all the sidewalks, we could change that internal one and just have the one sidewalk on Glenwood.
So that would just kind of slide over to be on Glenwood Road and then put in, all right. I think the only other question I had here was about the dumpster. I think one of the designer comments mentioned that garbage truck might not have room to maneuver in there to empty it. Is there, do you guys see any issue with that?
No, usually what happens on those small lots like that is you, when you contract with the waste hauler, you tell them that he has to have a rear loader, as opposed to a front loader, so he pulls up, backs in.
Okay, so then he could just drive straight out.
Yeah, that's what, on most of these small projects, that's what you do, you contract with them to do a side loader or a rear loader.
All right, that's all my questions.
We'll go to Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, from what I, from what I see, all these buildings, these four, you're going to clear the lot, basically, all those buildings are coming down, the house on the corner there?
Yeah.
And all the accessory buildings there? Yeah, and I, and I, I do understand that on the sidewalks there, and I know that's not in our purview, I understand, you know, that there are going to be sidewalks on Main Street connecting from one side to the other, and I'm glad to hear that. And there's going to be an access to that sidewalk from your parking lot. Yeah, so I think that that's a good, good step forward there. Overall, I think it's a good design, it's a good-looking project, and I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a statement in here that a detached garage would decrease the aesthetic value of the development. Can you guys explain that to some degree? Why a garage that would be on-site would be a detriment?
Well, it's going to kind of take away from the, it's going to take away from the look of the building coming in from the front, and the fact that it's, it just makes it very, a little bit more difficult to maneuver around with the snow plowing and getting vehicles in front of it and back of it. So, just didn't seem that having garages in that location was appropriate for this type of project.
Okay.
And then just to add as well, is that due to the geometry and the location of the parking lot, a detached garage would have to have the rear of the building facing Main Street, which we think would just have the negative aesthetic value to the property.
Okay. You couldn't flip that in the back somehow, somewhere, or something, or reconfigure it, so?
Not with the setbacks.
Maybe you could offer some covered parking spots or something, or...
Well, yeah, because now we're, with all the setbacks and everything, now it becomes a structure, as, you know, so if we flip-flopped it, it was a structure, and then we didn't want, we wanted the building to be less intrusive to Main Street when you're driving by, so if we had put the building, you know, parallel to Main Street, it caused another whole series of problems.
Okay. Could always get more rent if you had a garage.
Yeah.
So, but that was a consideration I thought of, but, so now, the sidewalk you're proposing from the parking lot to the street, like Mr. Lozotti said, you wouldn't think of moving it down to actually be on the sidewalk side of that or something, no?
So the reasoning of replacing the sidewalk where it was is, the entrance of the driveway is about 5% from Glenwood up, and then it comes down afterwards. Where it's placed now is just in a less steep location for, you know, either ADA access or just easier access to the parking lot and the building.
We have to be under 4%, or is, no?
Yeah, it would be that the 5% cross slope would be an issue.
So we're going to have four units there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, one visitor parking spot proposed, right?
Yes.
Okay. So my question is, if I'm having a party and I live there, and I have three friends come over that have three cars, they're not parking in the parking lot, probably, right?
No, they might park on the street like they do now.
They have to park on the street, right? Okay. You ran into that before with, you know, I know you meet the requirements, but, you know, some additional parking if you could, just for visitor possibilities in case somebody came and wanted to visit. Now suppose two people have company or something, you know, so...
Yeah, this is one of those things where we're chasing different regulations, you know, one driveway, two driveway, 22-foot driveway, 22-foot driveway, get caught into these different constraints, but, I don't know, I don't know if there's any place, you know, we'll have to take a look at it.
There's no more space to run out, a couple parking spots there, or not?
So I think that the issue that we ran into with trying to add more, at least in that location, is it ends up pushing the turnarounds into the no pavement buffer, and then by extension, the dumpster pad and...
Well, if we had a second curb cut, we could probably put two up of, off of that other street there.
Yeah.
Yeah, the dumpster's in that corner there, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just an idea and food for thought, you know, you know, because...
I think, I think if we, what we could pursue is if we could, if we get a second curb cut, not, what's the name of that street back there?
Maplewood, from the bottom.
Maplewood. You know, we might be able to put two spaces up there off of Maplewood, but we'd have to have another curb cut, so.
And please don't forget the postal regulations mailbox, it has to go somewhere there, and I don't see it on the plans, but, so, but...
I think with some...
In the CBU box there.
Yeah, I think we have to coordinate that through the postmaster, and they tell us where to put it.
You ought to have it on your plan, so you can say, "Listen, we want to put it here for that reason", whatever, so.
Yeah.
I'm all set, and I'm...
Well, if we, if we pick a location, will they put it there because it's...
Well, your argument could be that, "Listen, we have a location design, is that a problem for you? You know, it's going to meet our needs as far as parking lot goes, and you'd be able to pull in, you know, you have it on the curb, make it..."
We'll add that, yeah, we'll add that in.
Okay, all right, good. I'll send it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
So we can strongly suggest to the postal department...
Make it easy for them.
[laughing]
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, so I like that you added the bike rack. The only thing that, that had occurred to me was, it's pretty far removed from the building. Why on the other side of the driveway and not closer? People walking to their bike are going to have, you know, they're going to be walking a little ways before they get to it, and it's not really, based on the elevations, there's really not a lot of view from whoever may own the bike or bikes to see the rack. So if there were theft or vandalism or something, I just didn't know if maybe there were some alternative locations you could look at, maybe bring it closer to the building so it doesn't look quite so isolated out there.
Yeah, we could even put it in the front corner there.
Yeah, so we originally showed it in, in the front, just in an unpaved area, and one of TEC's requirements was that we show it... of TEC's requirements was that we show it over pavement instead. I actually ended up moving it on that sidewalk, but it can be moved to...
Okay, I mean, I like that it's right under a street light, but also I just feel like with the sidewalk right there, people driving by, you know, people do stupid things in the middle of the night when nobody's looking for absolutely no reason, so I just felt like...
If we'll see if we can relocate that, and we don't want to get too close to the street either, because then, you know, the bikes are susceptible to wind roll and the snow plowing.
I was thinking more along the lines of you have your sidewalk maybe towards the back of the building, if you could put it back there. You've got those, you have the ADA accessible space, and then you have a couple more spaces.
Yeah, we can do that, right?
And that proposed five-foot sidewalk goes to that end, so...
We can, we can move it there. I have to, I have to confess that I haven't ridden my bike in a long time, so I don't, you know, key in on where the best location is for it to be placed, but...
That's fine, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Nothing to add on the, you know, on the comments made so far, just the renderings are good, so that's why I was interested in to be able to see it from the other sides. So I appreciate that, thank you. With that, I'll open up to anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one. Seeing none, bring it back to the board. So we have a couple of outstanding things, or so, or are these, any of these...
Because we received the peer review today, and like, you know, the applicant said as well, I haven't had a chance to go through everything and see if there are still items to resolve and whether things can be incorporated as conditions or waivers, so I think that it would be beneficial to be able to get a complete look, and the applicant mentioned they're still working on a counterproposal to the DPW regarding the sidewalk.
Okay, all right, so...
It didn't look like there was anything in that letter, but we wouldn't want to take a chance.
Okay, all right. Currently, we show two waivers in here, nothing's changed on that, right?
No.
Okay, so the next time, if all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, we might be in a position to close this out?
Yeah, because a lot of their comments are, they defer to the planning board, so I think we got a good indication from the comments that the members made this evening as to how they would go on those particular topics. So we'll add the, we'll modify the bike rack, we'll take care of the post office box location, and we'll see how we make out. We wouldn't hold up the, your vote on the sidewalk because, but we would just want, put in the record that should the waiver not come to fruition, then we'll just build it. So that's what we would, one of the conditions that we would probably look for.
So Mr. Cuco, I have a question for you before we close up. The grass strip, that's always been proposed, but do you have to have that there? You know, the question is who maintains that grass strip?
Yeah.
You know, it sounds like it's a pain in the neck sometimes, but it's always been put in, so I mean...
Well, that's what's in the regulations, but, so you're talking about bring the sidewalk right out to the curbing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So in this case, it was requested by TEC that we do show the grass strip, I imagine it should be regulation and DOT.
Yeah, so that's one where we can go either way. I agree with you that, I know the state just did this on Route 38, and all the landscapers told me that unless it's at least three feet wide, you can't get grass to stay long-term. So we'll take a quick look at that, but we have no, we have no objection of sliding it over.
Maybe you submitted as a...
What about turf? I mean, it seems like the turf has come a long way since, you know, AstroTurf first came out, but, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and this is a great question, Mr. Fratella, about who maintains that? You know, does it grow weeds, is it being...
Yeah, well, that's in 38, so if it was, if it was on the side street, we could do that, but I think that's in, if it's in the MassDOT regulation, then we have to do it. So we'll double-check that. If it's in the MassDOT regulation, I think it probably is, because I see some that are only six inches wide on the new redone Main Street. I think they should worry about trying to set those castings on the manholes level with the pavement than a three-inch strip of grass, but that's a day for another, that's an argument for another day.
Kid disagree with that.
All right, so with that, I'll take a motion to continue this one to 7:15 on 4/29.
No motion.
Motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and second, all those favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll see you next time. That brings us to Agenda Item H1438, Main Street. This is continued from our 3:25 meeting. So once you're settled, if you give your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, members of the board. My name is Don Bornstein, I'm an attorney at the office of Johnson &amp; Bornstein. My office is located at 12 Chestnut Street in Andover, I represent the applicant. You know James Hanley, who's with me this evening as well, from Civil Design, the project engineer. It's been some time since we've been in front of you substantively. With your indulgence, we've taken several months and been speaking to our abutters. You'll remember from our last substantive hearing, we had a fairly significant crowd of abutters. They raised various concerns. They were both from the Serena Woods condominium development, which, who we share a driveway with in this project, as well as the Kim family on the, our other immediate abutter to the proposed parking. So we have made good use, I believe, of those several months, many conversations, many emails, a lot of back and forth, many plan changes that the board has been luckily saved from during that several-month period. I'm happy to report, and I believe the trustees of Serena Woods condominium are here tonight to express their position, but we have reached an agreement with the Serena Woods condominium trustees regarding the project on the plan that you see before you tonight. That the significant part of that agreement is, in essence, the applicant will be taking on various maintenance responsibilities of the shared driveway within the, what I'll call the Tewksbury Dental Associates lot. So they'll be taking on roadway, sidewalk landscaping maintenance that's now done by the Serena Woods condominium. They'll be owning all of that within their lot. And we've also made various plan changes with the input from Serena Woods that you'll see explained by Jim in just a minute. We've also had fairly significant discussions with Sean Kim, acting on behalf of his family, who owns a home just on the other side of our parallel parking spaces. Unfortunately, Mr. Kim did express clearly to me that his family still opposes the project, but we did take some design input from Mr. Kim, and we specifically specked out the tree plantings and a fairly substantial grouping of arborvitae plantings. We took those specs with Mr. Kim's input in mind. So I do want to note, I appreciate his input, even though he opposed the project, he was willing to speak with me, had several emails with me, and had some positive input, I think, on the project. So I think overall, there was a lengthy process, I believe it had a fairly good outcome. There, you still might hear some concerns from folks tonight, but we believe very strongly that we took the best effort we could with the abutters and addressed many of their concerns and reached a key agreement with the trustees of the Serena Woods condominium. So with that, I'll be quiet, I'll turn it over to Jim with your indulgence, and he can, he can bring us through the site plan as it says today.
Yep. So for the record, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. I think in light of the fact that we originally submitted this, I think it was July or August, it probably makes sense to just kind of give a recap of like everything, and then I'm just going to talk a little bit about where we were and then how we've modified the plan to get to the point where we are today. So we're here tonight because we're requesting consideration for the modification to allow nine additional parking spaces. When we came in front of you in August, it was 14. That was our original proposal that was in front of you at that time. So, as you know, this is a mixed-use development. It has 1438, which is essentially professional office or the dentist office that's up front along Main Street, and then there's 12 detached residential commercial, residential units out toward the back. The current zoning is mixed-use business, and we originally went through the design and permitting process in 2014, 2015. By the time everything got built out, it was 2019, give or take. I want to be clear that as was the case in August, is the case now, that there's no proposed changes beyond the property line of 1438 Main Street. We're not proposing any adjustments to the Serena Woods property itself. We have nine additional parking spaces is what we're proposing. We have an increase of approximately 1,800 square feet of impervious surface. That's down from about 4,800 square feet of additional impervious surface when we're here in front of you in August. The drainage system essentially works the same way, we have a catch basin, and I'll approach the board in just a minute to kind of recap this, but a catch basin captures the entrance lane in along Serena Way and redirects that back toward our development. And then we're proposing to increase the capacity of the subsurface retention system that's on our lot to offset that increase in impervious surface. So I'm just going to walk, get toward the board and comment. All right, so this is the current plan that we took some time to develop with the help of the HOA and really tried to address their concerns. We have three parking spaces, we have nine here now. Previously, we had, I believe it was seven, six down here, so we've reduced the size to address both some of the comments that we heard from the board as well as the HOA itself. We've been, been able to modify the parking lot, that reduction. You may recall that initially, this entire stretch of vegetation was proposed to be removed, and all we were going to be able to provide if we were to do that was a four-foot batuminous sidewalk along Serena Way. We've been able to modify the plan to keep the landscaped island as well as the existing sidewalk that is parallel with Serena as well. There was one comment that we did get from the board that we thought gave a lot of sense is that we had the 11 spaces here, they're all 22 feet in length. Well, that did comply with the zoning regulations, the discussion was had a little bit about the challenges some people have with parallel parking, so we increased those each by about 18 inches, give or take, so they're 23 and a half. And what that ended up doing was reducing the length overall that we had, because now we had longer stalls, and we're also eliminating a parking space that was in that general area right there. So that's how we went from, I'm trying to make sure I'm not making a mistake, we went from 11 in August to nine currently. Again, we also had six in this general location here, we've cut that back down to three. When we were in front of you, what our proposal was to have access at two locations along Serena Way, so punch out an accessway to the south here as well as to the north and make those both in and outs. After a lot of discussion and review of the traffic circulation, what we were asked to consider was making this, eliminating the bottom and making one entrance out of the parking lot onto Serena Way. So that still allows us to utilize the existing parking area, come in, if there's no parking available here, we can go out. If we have three here, great, we can park, and if there's any that belong here, now we're coming in on that same side of the accessway. There was also some discussion at one point about signing all of these parking spaces so that they'd be reserved for the people that work there, so we added the signage, the appropriate signage to make sure that we have employee-only parking, so each one of these nine spaces, as well as these three spaces here, are reserved for employee parking. One of the items that came up that there was a lot of discussion with the HOA was in regards to vegetation. When we eliminated a retaining wall that was located here, what that required us to do is basically slope from the top of our curb up to the property line. When we had to do that, we were likely to lose some trees in this area, so we went back out and located every single tree along the shared property line, and we quantified what we believe we're going to lose, and we've also quantified what we believe we're going to replace, which is 15 on eight-foot American Killip or Timberland Green, probably between the three feet line center. So we quantified this whole area and the impact that we believe we're going to have. The intent is to make sure that we at least replace anything that we've removed. And then also, when we replant the string, you really don't want it planted more than three feet, closer than three feet, because you just end up getting, you know, five years down the road, it's, they're too close. We're asked to provide a no trespassing sign, which we provided, and we were also asked to provide this area here as temporary so of snow storage. So the idea is that it is signed, that no parking when snow or mobile conditions exist. So we'll have a little bit of a discussion about this. This is one waiver that we're requesting from the board. At least consideration for is don't satisfy the minimum area requirement for the snow storage. We're asking for a waiver, we've addressed that in the operations and maintenance plan. Essentially, it's going to work how it works now. If the capacity of the area proposed to store snow is exceeded, we're going to truck it offsite if we need those spaces. That's, that's what we agreed to do. Where we stand right now is we did get a, I guess it would be a final review letter from DPW. We take no exceptions with anything that they've noted. The planner has also provided a final letter, we take no exceptions with what she's noted. We're on schedule to be in front of conservation on Wednesday night of next week, at which time we hope to close that out as well. DPW has been notified, there's no outstanding comments from them as well, so a lot of work has gone in since August with the help of Don and workable HOA, and I hope we've struck the balance that you were looking for last summer.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Fratella.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a question regarding the parking lot, Mr. Hanley. So the exit, it says on the, on the plans that, is that an exit only where it says stop on there?
It is, yep.
So exit only?
Yep.
No one's coming in that way?
No one's coming in that way.
Okay.
Yep.
So my concern was the fact that if somebody was coming in that way, that last parking spot would be a hazard for somebody to come backing out not knowing someone was coming in, so that design works pretty well for me. I still have a problem with the nine parking spots you're looking to put on the right side of the road up there as you come in. I wasn't in favor of it in August, and I'm still not in favor of it now. I just, so my other question is, how is the parking at the facility right now on a daily basis for the, for the two businesses that are there?
So it fluctuates based on the time of day and when it's in the day of the week. What I can tell you is that we've gone through a lot of work to try to address the demand that the guy that owns it knows he is, either has or is, or is going to have. I can't quantify that for you right now, but he knows he needs these parking spaces.
I could add to that, Jim, as well, if it, if it helps. We did submit a letter, it goes back a while, but we submitted a letter in October providing more detail from Dr. Nahada about the parking demand and why that, why it is, why he's spent all this time, all this honestly money effort looking for this additional parking. But we did provide you with the numbers that go behind his strong belief that he needs the extra parking. Really, it comes down to, you know, the number of operatories and the patient rooms, the number of staff that are on-site, and then, of course, the number of patients that are there, and the key is, he needs to have some... And the key is, he needs to have some buffer. So he has, with this plan, he'll really have about 25 percent, he's estimating, for turnover overlap. So if he, if there are 20 patients in that facility at a time between the two medical offices, he'll have after staff and patients, he'll have a 25 percent overlap allowance that'll fit everybody on the site. And if anybody's ever been to a dental office, it's not unusual to wait for someone to come out before you come in. So that's really where, even though it's, and we've discussed this before, it's in excess of the town's parking requirements. He's spent all this effort because he thinks he really needs that to support his patients.
Okay. What's up, Mr. Jim?
All right. Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to, you know, hold most of my comments until after we hear from the residents, but I just have a couple of quick comments here. Like, one is that you've come to an agreement with the HOA that both parties are happy with? Is that my understanding, or is that not the case?
No, it is, but I see both of the trustees of the condominium here tonight, and I'm not going to step on their toes. I'll let them explain that for themselves as well. But yes, an agreement has been reached on that with the trustees of the condominium.
All right. Well, I really hope that's the case. And just as a commentary, I don't have a problem with the nine employee parking spaces coming in. I think that's a, I think that's kind of a good fit in there, in that space, especially with the arborvitus going in at three-foot centers. The snow storage waiver, I won't have a problem with that. It seems pretty reasonable ask right there. And then you have those extra parking spaces in the good weather. So that makes sense to me. And as long as things get worked out with the infiltration, with DPW engineering, I'm okay with that. That's all I have right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, I just want to try, you mentioned a retaining wall. Is that an existing retaining wall that's coming out? Or is that the retaining wall that's going in to create the border for your employee parking spaces?
Yeah. So the original submission in July of last year had, instead of having a curb, right, along the, where we're cutting in for those nine parking spaces, we had a retaining wall. What that allowed us to do is maintain some of that slope. DPW made a comment that they didn't think it was, they'd prefer to see curb instead of the retaining wall. So we modified the plan accordingly. So it was proposed in July. We got the comment from DPW. We therefore removed the retaining wall.
Okay. So what's the, what's the elevation change between the curb and, for example, the property of 1426 Main Street, which is just on the other side of those three existing arborvitus? And where I'm going with this is, I just want to make sure that the neighboring properties are not going to have a lot of soil erosion and runoff from storms coming down into your parking spaces. So I don't want them to lose their soil.
Yeah.
And I don't want her to end up in this proposed parking lot.
Right, right. So you can see that the steepest area is approximately three feet over 10, so somewhere about a three-to-one slope, which is something we work with all the time. And then if we were to go over here, we would have 114 over 115. It's essentially flat in this area. This is where the wall was that we initially proposed. So you can see the top of the curb is 116. The tie-in contour is about 119. So it's about three feet over 10.
Okay. And then, I just wanted to go over, you submitted a lighting plan.
What's mine?
And I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. Does it look, it looks like we have a little bit of spillover from sight pole A. It looks like we have five-foot candles. Are those foot candles, the measurements here?
They are. I believe it's a half a foot candle, though.
Is it a half?
Yeah. They're really hard to read, the lighting plans. We don't do them, but they are challenging to read.
So I guess basically, I don't know if there's, you had said that the resident, I believe we're talking about the same one that's in that house, was already opposed to this. But I guess if it were to move ahead anyway, if we could try to make sure that none of that light spills back into their property where they're a little bit higher up?
Sure.
Is that a 20-foot pole there? So that's going to stick above the eight, how tall, I forget.
Yeah, it would.
The arborvitus are what, about eight feet tall?
About eight, we plant them at eight feet. They're about three feet high, three feet, the slope, three feet higher than the roadway, right? So that's 11.
Okay.
So yeah, there would be. And the only thing I'd mention is that there currently is a light pole in that area. So the idea would be to have no more impact than what's currently out there right now.
Okay. So that one is just one relocated light pole. And then what, we're adding one, just one more at the other end of the nine spaces?
Correct.
Just before you take the curve?
Yep.
Take the curve there?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have for now. Like Mr. Duffy, I'm interested to hear how the residents, where they stand with all of these improvements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Lozati?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, so a little bit more on the arborvitus up at the top. Is there a reason they don't go all the way to the end of space nine there? They kind of stop at space seven?
You're talking. So this is where the limit of our rating that impacts the existing arborvitus was. So we're knowing that there may be one, two, three trees in this area, then some scrub along the property line. So we don't think we have to go any further into that area to do so. But we'd also be agreeable that if we pull a tree down, that we replace it. I mean, that's the intent of what we're trying to achieve.
I think that makes sense. And yeah, I'm just kind of looking at it now. It'll go roughly to where it goes now.
All right. And if I could add to that, that was a specific point that was discussed with the Butters as well. And I believe Jim's added a note that if there's further tree disturbance from what is expected, our note says that we'll replace those trees with the same like-kind trees that we're spec'd in cooperation with the Butters.
Great. And then I think just kind of on where you have the, kind of the counterclockwise traffic arrows that you have here. So when you're first pulling in there, it looks like your arrow basically telling people not to take that first left. It looks like it's about halfway down there. Is there any chance you could move that a little bit closer so that somebody coming in might see it?
You're referring to the painted traffic?
Yeah, the painted traffic arrow, the one that you have actually in the driveway there. Okay.
And you're saying on the entrance lane, is that?
Yeah. So just if somebody's kind of coming in, they take that turn in, and you don't want them to go in that, take a right or left. Yeah, it would be a left, take a left into that top section there. It just looks like the arrow is like most of the way down there instead of, you know, where a driver would initially see it, even if you do have the do not enter sign there. Let's see what else. I think you had mentioned also the, kind of you had submitted a letter kind of about parking demand, the number of operatories actually in the building. I remember there were some, apologies if we already answered this, I remember there was some debate over the amount of operatories actually there. Do we have a number on that?
Sure. So I believe our letter explains that there are 15 dental operatories. And that's where the parking number is generated from. So 15 staff, 15 patients, and then eight additional general staff from that. And then the tenanted space, which is a separate medical practice, they have, I believe our letter explains, they have five treatment rooms, 10 total staff. So that's where our, that's where our numbers came up with, and that's how we basically calculated with the number of spaces we have proposed now. We have about a 25 percent overlap allowance when you count up all the, if it's fully staffed, fully patiented.
All right. Thank you. I believe that's all the rest of my questions. Again, interested to see what the Butters have to say.
All right.
All right. So for my purposes, I have no issue with what you have drawn up here at this point. You know, because those nine are being used as employee, because they're the first ones in, you know, that should be easier to get those squared away. You know, even if there's turnover of the staff later, it's still not the same thing as patients in and out, you know, trying to use those spaces as opposed to the ones in the main parking lot. And then the staff's less likely to be leaving as often as you're going to have patients going out. So I'm happy that the patients will be contained in the main parking lot, walking back and forth, as opposed to walking out across the drive lane and everything else. You know, I'm fine, you know, we can incorporate the tree-for-tree thing into our stuff as well. The markings and everything in perpetuity, they'll be kept, you know, up and visible. That's always one that seems to be a problem for a lot of people, once they start to disappear from being run over, people start following the rules. So the signs and the signage on the ground, all that is to stay clear for everybody to see. Otherwise, you know, I don't really have too much more. I will caution before we get into the public portion, again, I'll remind you, whatever agreement you do or do not have or make whatever with the Butters isn't actually the concern for the board. So we don't need the details of whatever that is. So really, when the Butters speak, it's really about, you know, if you have issues, you don't have issues, that's kind of what we're talking about. We're not in the business of then enforcing anything that you guys have decided amongst yourselves, just so we're clear about that before we get to that portion. You know, those things will not find themselves into the special permit unless they happen to overlap with something we're already doing. That's not where that happens. That's a private issue, and that should be where it's kept. All right? All right. So with that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Respected Chairman, distinguished members of the board, thank you very much for an opportunity to stand up here and share my comments and observations on this application since it was filed back in July over the last 10 months. This might not necessarily be concerns or objections, but comments. So we know that, you know, this is an application for converting a small strip of landscape area into 12 parking spaces. Originally, it was not designed for that, but here we are. I don't know who came up with that idea, but we are converting a small landscape corner into parking spaces for the commercial needs of the applicant. Now, we've had the residents from Serena Woods, we had members of the Serena Woods Condominium Trust, we've had our engineer up here sharing concerns, comments. Not here to speak about any of the concerns and comments. The civil engineering representative of the applicant, as well as the legal representative of the applicant, have done their best to make their client happy, right? But we all know that it's just a small piece of landscape area where we are trying to cram additional parking spaces over there. If you could ask me that, you know, can I put 10 chairs over there and have 10 people seated at this table? Sure, yes, we can. But would we want to do that? Maybe not. You know, that would be invading your private space, right? You know, you would not be comfortable with 10 people more sitting at the table, right? That's exactly what's happening here. So a few pointers that I would like to touch upon, you know, my observations. There was mentioning about the justification, the requirement, right? We've also provided documentation on how open the parking lot is during most of the day. We have seen that. We've provided documentation on that.
So I don't mean to interrupt, just because I wanted to make sure it's clear for the record. In the past, when you've come in, you've been as a representative of the condominium trust. Is that how you're appearing right now?
Yes.
Or is this as an individual?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good. Just, I just want to make sure that was covered.
Yes. I'm sorry, I should have introduced myself. My name is Arifat Khan. I'm, you know, representing Serena Woods Condominium Trust, Tewksbury.
Okay, thank you.
So the justification letter, you know, I think back in October, the justification letter was provided. And the justification provided in the letter did not hold up to the actual building plan or the layout. And those documents were actually provided with the planning board, and it was busted the very same night. And you have a copy of that as well. And I do too over here. Clearly, the requirement claimed by the applicant was 53, but if you actually look into the actual number of operatories in that building, because we know, we have the building plan, we have the layout, we know it's 8,550 square feet, that requires only 43 parking spaces. The requirement was mentioned as 53. If you do the numbers, the actual requirement is 44. What's currently existing is 49 parking spaces. In addition to the 49, we are adding 12 more. It takes the number from 49 to, you know, 61. So anyway, we never received a revised justification letter. I remember you asking for it, but we'd never received one. We probably would not receive it at all because that would be like self-incriminating the previous facts. So who would want to do that, right? You know? So spoke about the justification of the need. So right from the beginning, we have not been chasing the need for parking spaces, only the greed for parking spaces. I don't know, we started with a number like around 20-something. It went down to 17, 15, 14. Now here, hey, we are at 12, right? You know, we are at 12. At the very first hearing, our respected chairman himself said that, you know, there shouldn't be three parking spaces at the entrance, should be removed, right? Out of those nine parking spaces, three should be removed, but that did not happen. Only two were removed, you know, going from 11 to nine. So we saw that, you know, applicant. Anyway, next, we know that this is a project where trees are being cut, this landscape area is being removed to convert into parking, right? So we were hoping that the application would be first presented in front of the conservation committee, but that never happened ever till date in the last 10 months, right? We have one coming up on April 17th, a hearing with the conservation committee. But if a decision is going to be made today, I don't know what value their feedback or, you know, or comments has if a decision is made. Anyway, so there is one on April 17th with the conservation committee, but I don't know if it even makes any sense to, you know, or should we wait for their comments before a decision? You know better, I'll leave it to you. So on the traffic pattern, you know, we worked with the civil engineer. Our civil engineer also worked with their civil engineer to explore all possible options when we came up with what best could be done. You know, because in reality, we know there's not a lot that could be done, right? And things could happen. We have done our best, you know, we've reviewed this plan, we've done what best could be done. But we'll have to wait and watch, we'll have to see what happens. If things happen, you know, if there's a collision, damage to property and life, it happens, it happens, we don't know. But we know what we are trying to do here, you know, it's just trying to, you know, convert a small strip space into. Anyway, so next was snow storage. We discussed about this also. The applicant has submitted a waiver for reduced snow storage area. And there was, there are three parking spaces, this is right here. These three parking spaces used to be our snow storage or is our snow storage area. But, you know, they have, I don't know if they've addressed the concern, but you know, they've said that those three spaces would be used as snow storage, temporary snow storage until the snow will be shipped out, right? So these three spaces will act as parking slash snow storage slash whatnot. So we'll have to see, you know, the applicant, you know, filed this application back in July, even when there was an agreement in place, had no regard for the existing agreement that he himself had signed clearly above the law. So we'll have to see how the applicant will remain committed to whatever he has claimed in this or in the long-term operations manual. You know, a lot of, you know, language is there for maintenance and everything, you know. We'll have to wait and watch if the applicant will remain committed to all that. Finally, the maintenance, you know. So after having maintained the applicant's property for almost a decade, you know, having spent about $45,000, although we've got all the invoices, but don't go by our words, in the long-term operations manual, it's if the applicant has mentioned how much it's going to cost to maintain that changes. So if you can go by that, that has been filed with the board also. So, you know, there's a lot of money we have spent to maintain the applicant's property. But finally, we are glad that, you know, the applicant has agreed to maintain his own property. It sounds absurd to even say that, you know, we all maintain our own properties, right? But anyway, here we are, which is, you know, we welcome that and we thank that. But, you know, there's something know, there's something to be noted, that it is, obviously, it's not going into effect immediately. The applicant has said that, you know, they want to squeeze as much as possible, they want us to maintain it until the last day or the, you know, a week before the start of construction or whatever, you know. Up until the last minute, basically, they want us to maintain, which we are fine, we are happy to do that. You know, we don't mind, you know, continuing the maintenance up until the last minute. What we currently have is not a signed agreement on the amendments. I know this is not a big concern for the board, but, you know, it's, I would like to just touch upon it, I'll wrap it up, that, you know, it is, the actual amendment has not been signed yet, it's only a covering agreement has been signed that, yes, should there be an approval from the boards and the committees, and should there be availability of the construction of, you know, contractors, builders, and should the applicant decide to move forward with the application or the construction? It's if, I don't know, why would they even file an application, they are not interested in actually putting it in, anyway. So, should that happen, that's when they would be taking on the responsibilities of maintaining their own property, right? So those were some of the key areas that I just wanted to share my comments on, you know, but I also would like to take this opportunity to thank the civil engineer and the legal representative of the applicant, who has worked with us closely in the last 10 months. It was not easy, every little change, you know, it was not easy, there was a lot of back and forth and back and forth to get those into actually over here. What you're actually seeing here is several pushbacks and back and forth is what we have guarded over here, you know. A lot of residents, as you can see, these empty chairs, you know, a lot of them have not even showed up today, probably they've lost hope. I haven't, I believe in you, the board, the committee, the procedure, that's why I'm still standing here, and I believe that your collective knowledge across that table will do the best, in everybody's best interest. With that, I rest my comments. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Hello, my name is Anurag Gupta, 75, Serena Way. Thank you for the time today to speak. I have one question, and then one safety concern. My question first is regarding the actual parking in relation to how a decision was made for Treehouse Brewery, where they had extra parking that they were asked for.
Yeah, we're not crisscrossing
Okay.
applications, so we're going to stick to them.
I was just curious about the precedent being set there for here.
I wouldn't categorize it as a precedent or any such thing. Each hearing is dealt with separately, with separate reasons and, you know, areas. I don't believe that the property being discussed right now crosses 38, for example.
Okay.
So it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, so...
Yeah, and, you know, I just wanted to clarify that for myself, and to understand that, and the second thing I wanted...
You can take it with you.
Was just one safety concern that I wanted to raise here, was when you're exiting from here, and some cars entering from, on this side here, there's a blind spot here for this car exiting, so I was just wondering about the possibility, putting up a mirror over here to allow for visibility over here, and for cars that are entering over here to have visibility on this side, to basically prevent any collision, because it is a blind curve, and I've driven it many, many times, and just for the safety point of view, if you can't see from here, over here, someone's coming, and so if you turn, there's a possibility, and I've had it happen myself, when I'm around here, and I don't see this car here, and, you know, it's a close call, so just consideration for safe point of view here. Thank you.
So Mr. Hanley, just, so if you're coming out from where that stop line is, I'm trying to look at the plan, is there something in your way that you can't see to your left and back a little?
No.
I don't see any, like, landscaping or any...
So that's why we have a stop sign, for one, right? But there's no significant landscaping there, there is a utility pole, I mean, a light pole, right, but the light pole's only 12 inches wide. So you definitely have to turn 90 degrees to take a look. We, I don't think we're opposed to putting a sign maybe along Serena Woods that says driveway, you know, approaching or approaching driveway, or something along those lines, just to give another level of warning.
Okay, yeah, I think that would probably be a worthwhile add, just, you know, cause exiting ahead, whatever, you know, whatever signage makes the most sense, but something to give some indication that, you know, there is a potential for a car to be coming out, is you banking that right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Hi, I'm Rohit Chetty, I'm a resident at 80 Serena Way. Just a clarification on that point, so are we just putting a sign, or are we talking about, like, putting a mirror? Because, like, this happened to me, like, pretty recently, where if, there is a stop sign here, if someone doesn't stop at the, again, it's not the applicant's problem, but at least if I'm coming in from Main Street, and someone doesn't stop at the stop line, at least we have a chance to see each other and hit the brakes. Whereas over here, because there are cars parked all along here, even, it doesn't matter if it's a truck or just an SUV, you don't have any visibility when you're turning in. So you need to have some kind of, like, I've seen those mirrors where you have the edges where...
Yeah, but I'm not sure what the mirror would go on, because you don't have anything there, right, except for that one light pole, right?
Correct, right.
So that'd be the idea for the sign on the way in, to warn the driver coming in?
No, so the cars that are coming here, they don't have the ability to see the cars that are coming from Serena Way. I don't have the ability to see the car that is going to come out of the parking lot here, and there are cars parked all the way till here, so I have no visibility.
No, I understand what you're saying, but they're talking about putting a sign for an incoming car to warn it that there are cars that can be coming out from the driveway, and I just checked with Mr. Hanley to make sure that there's nothing in the way of the driver coming out from the stop line to look to their left and back slightly to see if a car's coming. Now, I certainly can't control if people come bombing through down that road. I mean, theoretically, you should be coming through there pretty slow.
Correct.
So, you know, when you come to a point where a car be coming out, you know, both cars should have, you know, sufficient sightline and time with the warning and the sightline of the car coming out of that out only.
Yeah.
I'm not sure there's much more we can do. I'm not real thrilled with the idea of a mirror as the best safety precaution, because that, you know, it requires a lot of different things for that to be useful, including it's not in a place where it's going to be faced with glare.
Okay.
I don't know. For all I know, the time of day that would be most applicable, you'd be blinded by that thing, having sun coming off it if you're trying to use it to see stuff. So I have no idea, I'd rather see the signage as the warning than try to depend on the mirror, you know, one of those convex mirrors that, you know, it's like looking out your right side car mirror, you know, objects in this thing are confusing, you know, I mean, might as well put the label on it, you know? So I'd just as soon see the signage as the better indication to be careful.
Yeah, absolutely, if that's the best way to approach it, I support it, but at this point, it is true that when you're driving and when you're entering to Serena Way, and when you're about to take that right to enter the Serena condominium, you don't have visibility, even if there's just an SUV parked, doesn't matter even if it's a truck. So that is an issue, so if you can address it, that would be great.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could you just ask the speaker to identify themselves? Again, I didn't hear what their name was and whether they are a trustee of Serena Woods or not.
I think you just gave an address, right?
Yes, I am a trustee, this happened to me two days ago, that's why I didn't have a chance to bring it up. All I'm proposing is just adding a mirror, not changing the plan or anything, it's just a safety thing. If it's a sign, it's a mirror, I think that's fine by us. If you don't put anything, I think we'll have to take it as is. So, as Mr. Arafat mentioned, you know, we are agreeing to, you know, if it were to be approved, we are agreeing to the changes so far, but this just happened like a couple days ago, so that's why I'm bringing it up.
Just what happened a couple days ago?
It was almost an accident there, where he came out of that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, like, I was entering from the Main Street, and the car was exiting from the parking, the other car didn't stop at the stop, at the stop sign, and it would have been a close call, but at least we had the opportunity to see the other car, like, the other cars could see me, I could see the other car.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you were one of the two gentlemen, you and Arafat were one of the two gentlemen who were in my office signing the agreement the other day?
Yes, I showed up in your office to sign, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
I am Tip, representing 1428 Main Street. I'm not good at English, please understand. Significant portion of our backyard is wetland. Upon reviewing the plans, it evident that the two parking spaces at the far end of the parallel parking lot obstructs the drainage of this wetland. However, there are no provisions in the plans to address this issue. I kindly request that you either devise the solution for this, or reconsider the inclusion of these two parking spaces in the plan. During heavy rainfall, the drainage in our backyard becomes inadequate. The retaining walls of the parallel parking lot exacerbate this issue, and it appears that no measures have been taken, no mitigated. This concern had been raised previously, and I have also provided a video for reference. I strongly believe that trees should be planted from the beginning to the end and between the parallel parking lot and the boundary line of our property. However, this proposed blueprint does not include planting trees up to the end of the parallel parking lot. This oversight could result in our backyard being visible from the parking lot, potentially compromising our privacy, as previously communicated. On numerous occasions, I have observed that the parking lot at 1438 Main Street had more than 10 vacant spaces even on busy days. I have also submitted photographs previously. I kindly request not to proceed with this plan at expense of compromising our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm not good at English. I submit...
Could I have that? Can that, can you pass that over to this person? So just out of curiosity, so where you have the, if I understood this correctly, where we, where you show the end of where you're putting in the new planting, how difficult would it be to just continue those on until they butt up against what is staying?
Not, what we try, what we're trying not to do is clear more than we need to clear to put new trees down, right? So if you were to look at the grading plan, I think...
So put it this way instead, like, is there a way to fill that section in a little bit more, to add a little more buffering, where it ends where you have the significantly more that's coming in now?
Right.
To kind of fill that area, maybe it isn't trees, maybe it's something else, but just something to kind of make it as sort of thick as what you're getting everywhere else down towards the end to accommodate, you know, what doesn't look like happens at the last two spaces?
Yeah, I think, I think if that's a sticking point with the board, then we would definitely be willing to...
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to screw up the landscaping, I want it to be
I don't think it would.
Additional, not problematic.
Right, I guess I just want to be clear that there is a reason for it, right? Because our grading impacts stop at that approximate location, so we didn't extend it because it wouldn't be touching it at all. So we're trying to leave things the same, but if...
Well, the only thing I would say is that you're not the same because you've got parking spaces there now. That's different than before. So in this case, I would say that that would be the reasoning behind maybe putting in a little more extra, because, well, yes, you're not touching anything in terms of what was there, but you're creating something new on your side that they just as soon not see. You know what I mean? So anything that could help that in terms of, you know, just sort of filling out that area to keep it thick.
So the suggestion would be to continue along the abrevites to the end of the parallel parking space, as long as we're not taking trees down?
Right, I don't want to remove, because you might as well keep what you have, I'm just saying, thicken that up in that last two spaces, and I think that helps, because then it's consistent all the way through in hiding, you know, the spaces as much as possible, because again, you said that was the least incline as well, that's your flattest area, so it would make some sense to, like, you know, do what you can to kind of thicken that up, and that gives you the whole side. Does that make sense?
It does, it gives us, it probably equates to 12 to 18 more trees, and as long as we're not taking down established growth, I don't think anyone has any issue with that.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want you to put something in that's going to then kill a tree that's there, kind of thing, and take away from it.
Yeah, if we can have that flexibility, and maybe we can work with a planner or a DPW to make sure, you know, how far we can extend that out, because we also have the 50-foot and 25-foot buffers that are too far from there too, so...
Okay, all right. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, return.
Chairman, I have a comment if I could. So Mr. Hanley, how many trees are you taking down in that location?
Great question.
Because those trees were issues in the past with not growing correctly, and they were replaced, I think, at some point, if I can remember correctly?
Yeah, so...
For the abutter that was there before, I believe?
Right, so if you were to look at, I think it's C3 on the plant set, along that property line, we identified 27 trees that we're proposing to take down, because now they're in that slope, and we're replacing those with 59. So we're placing them, we're putting them tighter together, and if you look at the plan, we're extending them out fairly significantly as well.
What kind of trees are these?
So these are...
What's going to be there, not what's there?
Americans' pillar or Emerald Green abrevite.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, the only thing, and we're going at this in here too, is that they have to be maintained, same thing, in perpetuity, if these things start dying, you're going to bring in more trees.
Yep.
You know, if this turns into the front of CVS down south Tewksbury, where every second tree is just brown every 10 minutes, which I don't understand, but whatever it is they're doing, they're doing it wrong, and I want to make sure it's on paper here that those, you know, until you get it right, you're going to have to keep putting trees in there, all right? All right, anyone else with the board, any questions, comments? Mr. Duffy?
Yeah, just a couple. First of all, I would say that the 59 replacement trees is quite a substantial buffer, and I think it's probably a better buffer, you know, for eight-foot-high trees, I think it's extremely adequate. Great idea to bring it to the end of the parking spaces if that can be done according to conservation and so forth. I'm glad to hear that you and the residents have kind of come to some sort of agreement. It seems like that, you know, you've had some sort of a meeting in the minds there, I just, what the heck took you so long? But other than that, I think, I think, I think you've covered all the bases there, you know, you've addressed some lighting concerns, the turn on the parking there, I mean, I would think that the people that are going to be making that turn in and out on a regular basis there are going to be aware that there could be vehicles coming in either direction, so that's just something that we're all going to have to learn, driving in and out of there. So other than that, I don't have any, I don't have any additional concerns, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Nothing here, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you've seen the waivers, there's two, right?
One for the snow storage.
The other is technically for a master signage plan, applications for site planning, which it's clearly not applicable to this, but it does technically require a waiver.
So those are the two we have, and then in terms of conditions, you saw what Ms. Louder's presented, and...
I can actually add color to that, Mr. Chairman. So since I issued this on the 27th, the applicant did turn her head around rather quickly, but I didn't have time to re-comment. They have, in fact, submitted the PE stamp plans, but it sounds like we're going to be adding a couple of things here, adding the maybe traffic entering sign to accommodate the additional turning traffic, and the updating the traffic arrow location per Mr. Lozot's point, and then additional landscaping buffers. And as well, the long-term O&amp;M plan was revised, but we can make it a condition of approval to have it signed and submitted to the office. They already did submit the lighting plan, so that's a moot point. And then the last one is just trench permits with the DPW when that comes to pass. And then the other notes that you made about markings being maintained in perpetuity, the buffer trees being maintained in perpetuity as well, and then the tree-for-tree provision should... in perpetuity as well, and then the tree-for-tree provision, should any trees need to be take down, taken down in an effort to accommodate the construction, they will replace it.
And we've incorporated the snow storage and the parking spaces being used as necessary prior to
In the O and M plan, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, the, the employees only for the nine on the, on the, on the entrance way, or exit way, I guess, at that point, any, are there any others that I'm missing? To make sure we just say them out loud again? All right, okay, so with that, I'll bring it back to the board, was the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, as to the waivers, as requested, we have the section six-point-one-point-eleven-point-F and section six-point-two-point-ten-point-H, do you have a motion on the waivers?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the two waivers just listed, section six-point-one-point-eleven-point-F and six-point-two-point-ten-point-H.
We have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, four to one. All right, moving to the, where's my front page, yeah? All right, so as to the site plan review, what is the motion, do we have a motion from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan, sorry, is this site plan special permit?
No, just
Site plan review, okay, for fourteen thirty-eight Main Street.
So as, as
Waivers
Well, no, no, not the waivers, but with the conditions
With the conditions listed.
and the ones discussed and incorporated this evening, as well as the condition of approval for receiving the updated list, yeah, okay, all right, so we have a motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Four, one, all right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on to agenda item correspondence, I believe we had one piece of correspondence in the packet tonight, actually, we received that in the email and then here tonight, everybody can take note of that, but that doesn't really have anything to do with us, that's about going back to the select board, so, and that brings us to other business, not known at the time of the posting of this agenda, do we have any such things that anyone wishes to discuss?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman, if I could, some good news, I actually wanted to report to the board that I stopped in to see the Bri Lundie site, and happy to report, he's getting ready to open soon, very, very much impressed with the interior of the building as well, he proceeded to give me a tour of the facility, even though I was in a rush for time, but
Did you get free samples?
No, no, I actually was able to take a look upstairs and see the machinery he has invested in there, and it's quite a, quite an operation there, and I look forward to them opening, and hopefully they'll be a successful operation in town, and well, worth the effort that we put in to help him and get the process rolling for that particular site plan review at, at the old bakery that was there on Main Street, but, but she should be opening in the next couple of weeks, so hopefully we'll see that coming to fruition, so, a couple other questions I had for Alex is, are there any plans, do you know, to maintain that particular statue that's on Main Street, you know, I didn't know if, you know the statue, the Miko Kaufman statue that we, we have, we, we put a lot of money into getting that up and running and cleaned and so forth, I don't know if that's
I'm not aware of any specific plans, but I'm sure there's something.
Okay.
I've never looked at it myself.
Yeah, and the other thing, I got a call from a resident in town inquiring as to when they do clean up at those, some of the veteran sites that are, the squares that they have along some of the, some of the streets in town, I know you and your husband maintain the one at Pleasant Street in Whipple, thanks for doing that.
Somebody else maintains the one at Choshin in Maine, too.
Yeah, yeah, but I have seen the one at, at Halvisher in Chandler, that's like in disrepair, nobody really maintains it, but I, I thought that maybe the Beautification Committee does that, but I'm not quite sure.
No, so those, some of them are a part of the Adopt an Island program, as you mentioned, that's the one that, that I helped to take care of, it's because it's a part of that, there is another individual or two that seems to go around and take care of a lot of them, the one at the corner of Whipple and Pine, for instance, I've seen them out there, I do not know if there is a specific maintenance program, but I can reach out to the Veterans Agent and see if there is one, 'cause it's, and I'm certain it's not the Beautification Committee, but I can find out who it is.
I have reached out to the VFW Commission, the gentleman, Vinnie Oliva, and he didn't know who did it, but he
Yeah, I can ask the Veterans Agent to see if she knows.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be curious, just, I mean, I hate to see those things just sit there, I, I did see one at the corner of Pine, not Pine, yeah, Pine and Pond, I think that's maintained by the owner of the, of the land that's there, but, you know, some of them are just, they just get forgotten, you know, so, I mean, it's our town, I think we should look out for it as planning board members, that do whatever we can, I mean, if we, I know, I mean, I think the issue with Burger King is still outstanding, is I don't think it's in great repair down on, next to Home Depot there, but
Yeah, the, the corporate offices are difficult to get a hold of.
Yeah, and we've done our share, but
Yeah.
we drive by it all the time, I drive at the Home Depot and I leave, and I'm like, oh my God, you know, we have to bring that up to them again, you know, so, and you, and you look next door and Applebee's as pristine as could be, you know, so, but, hey.
Well, I mean, if we, if we have that much difficulty getting a hold of the corporate office, you can probably just send in a request to ask them what, what a day's worth of being closed costs them.
Certainly.
Because at some point, when they stop and don't listen and don't answer, the only option we have left is to come after the permit that allows them to do business every day, so they can either put some new rocks in there, like we've asked, and deal with it, or whatever the cost of a day's business is, is what they can start, you know, figuring out how to add up, 'cause at some point, you know, if, if you keep getting no answers, then there's no other way to do it, so, all right, any other
I'm all set, I just wanna
I mean, just, just 'cause Mr. Vitale brought it up, and I just happened to drive by it, but the, the Holbot liquor store, convenience store, I don't know, whatever it would be referred to, but the new one, the old building's gone now, which I drove by not very long before, and it was there, and now it's gone.
Yeah, it looks great.
I could, once it's cleaned up, that, that site where it was, I mean, I only now realize how much better that whole, like, line will kind of look, especially if at some point Sal's becomes operative again, but that whole sightline changes with that building gone, the house that was there that you didn't really know was there, you can kind of see it's there now, and the, the liquor store set back like that, it just makes a much nicer line of all those businesses slash house, businesses again
Yeah, it's
that just sort of comes right down much differently now, I don't think I really even noticed that until that house was gone, what a difference in sightline that makes to that area, but
I'll make one more comment, Mr. Chairman, and I'll let you go, I'll, I'll stop, is pleasantly surprised and happy to see the soldier on a property that's coming up and getting, getting built up and, and well on its way, so hopefully we'll see that completions in another year or so, but I'm happy to see it progressing, so, thank you.
All right, with nothing else, I will take a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, we'll see you on the twenty-ninth.